Calls meeting in order. Commissioner Lawrence.
Father, again we thank you and praise you for the privilege that we have to serve you. We thank you for the privilege that we have to serve our community. And Lord, I pray that as we serve, that we would bring honor and glory to you. I pray that we would make some good decisions for the folks in Cass County. And Lord, I thank you for the folks that are here, should present the works that they do. And I pray that you bless them and bless us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Barrera.
Let the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All are present. Before I open up the floor for public comment, this is for agenda items only. It's only going to be for three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will stop you, get a consensus. And if the board members don't mind, we'll let you continue on for a little bit longer. I just want to remind people, this is not a stage or a platform. So with that said, floor is now open. Floor is now closed for public comment. For additions or deletions to the agenda, I would like to add a, under old business, discussion about the investigation findings. That'll be number two, under old business, under M-127 2025.
Support.
And Sam, you have a...
Yes, also under, under finished business, I would like to add motion M-129-2025. Motion to add Vicki Hall to the Woodlands Board.
129 or 128?
Yours would be 128. No?
No, mine's just a discussion.
Okay.
So yours would be 128 2025.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move item seven, under the agenda...
The consent agenda?
To old business.
Alright, so we're going to move number seven.
That'll be number two or three.
Yeah, R-17 2025.
Yes, sir.
R-17 2025. Under new business?
Old.
Old business, got it. Is there anybody else? Alright. Commissioner Grace.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with amendments as presented.
Support. Motion on the floor and support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Letter H, public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to...
I would like to make a motion, M-118-2025, to open the public hearing on the fiscal year '26 budget.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. That's sufficient time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move M-119-2025 to close public hearing for the 2026 budget.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have closed the public hearing for the budget. No recognitions? Go green. You're up. Unless they play Michigan, then it's all go blue. But we still love you. Push the... Yep, there you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present again. It was good to see you back in May when we provided our 2024 annual report. At this time, I just want to thank you for your partnership with MSU Extension. Your support makes it possible for us to be able to serve Cass County residents in meaningful ways, and so we thank you for that. Today, we'll be providing an update on how things are going in 2025, just so that you're aware of the great work that our partnership is doing. I'd like to start off by introducing staff. We have some MSU Extension staff here. Kathy Fisher, who is a 4H supervisor. Hillary Hunt, who is our 4H program coordinator. And Janice Serb, who is a 4H educator. They'll have a chance to share a bit about the work that they have conducted this year. In 2025, it's only September. I can't believe we're already there, but we've had a very strong year. Nearly 900 residents have participated in 66 of our extension programs to date, and that number does not even include our 4H youth and volunteer numbers. This is information I pulled from a different database than our 4H online database. We have delivered 172 sessions across all four institutes. Based on our MOA, we do commit to provide programming across our four institutes. That is agriculture and agribusiness, children and youth, community food and environment, and our health and nutrition institute. We've also built and maintained multiple partnerships. Here on the document, it says 122. That is from time in perpetuity. This particular year, we've had 18 partnerships, active partnerships that we're working with. And these include schools, food pantries, tribal organizations, early care centers, local government, senior housings, libraries, you name it. Whoever wants to work with us, we are happy to partner with. And these relationships are really the backbone of the work we do. Now, speaking of our youth, I mentioned that the numbers that were at the top of the sheet do not reflect the 4H program youth. I just want to share that our 4H program continues to thrive. We have 656 youth enrolled, so this is the 4H at a glance at the bottom of the first page. And this is supported by very wonderful volunteers. We have over 180 volunteers who work with us on a regular basis. We have 20 clubs and two leader councils. So that's a lot of mentorship, leadership, and learning happening right here in Cass County. And we're so grateful for the partnership, both with the county and with our volunteer base. At this point, I'll invite my colleagues to come and share a bit more about what they're doing on the ground, share a bit more about 4H. You'll notice that the document that I brought today is quite heavy with 4H programming, and that's because a lot of great work is happening. So I'll give them an opportunity to share.
Hi, I'm Hillary Hunt, the 4H program coordinator here in Cass County. I just wanted to take a few minutes to expand on some of the work that I have done in the county. As you can see on pages two to four of the handout, many of the various programming activities include club and volunteer management tasks I've completed in the last year and a half. I'd like to talk a little bit more about a couple of these. One program I have really enjoyed this past spring was teaching embryology for two classes at Cass Middle School and Cassopolis High School. I partnered with Hannah Hoff, the ag science teacher and FFA advisor for programming. I supplied kits for each classroom and we incubated chicks. Over the course of five weeks, the students learned about chick development and chicken care. The students got to candle eggs, see the developing embryo inside, and so many students were just fascinated by being able to see the growing embryo in the egg, especially when it started to move. Being that the students were older, each group was assigned a couple eggs to track development. Some were just so passionate about those eggs, like they were just their own little kids that they were watching develop. Chickhatching day was super exciting, and at the end of the project, students adopted chicks. Some of them took them home with them. I look forward to pursuing more partnership opportunities with Mrs. Hoff and other teachers this year. Another activity I found beneficial for the Cass County youth was the sold kits. These kits were marketed towards youth and 4H clubs participating in the Cass County Fair. The kits were take-home kits, including all the materials needed to create buyer thank you cards, buyer thank you posters, and buyer letters, as well as a buyer thank you gift that youth could give to buyers from the youth auctions. You could also tailor the thank yous to show appreciation for sponsors of their projects if they had projects they chose not to sell. Also included in the kits were tips for writing thank you letters, buyer letters, as well as resources for examples of letters, which included links to flyers and videos. The kit was based off lessons from the 4H Curriculum: Youth Business Guide to Success. Another large part of my job responsibilities is club management and volunteer management. I have really enjoyed meeting Cass County volunteers and seeing how much passion there is in this county for the 4H program and youth involved in the program. As Kai mentioned, we have 20 4H clubs and around 180 screen volunteers in Cass County. I have gotten the opportunity over the past year to visit quite a few clubs. Some of them, I have helped with leadership transitions, club officer training, conflict resolution, and team building. Others, I have just visited to show support or offer ideas. This fall, I'm trying to focus more time on supporting our 4H Leaders Association and Horse Leaders Association. I'm in the process of planning fall training sessions and am planning a 4H officer training that will include parliamentary procedure training for youth and volunteers. Another portion of my time goes to the partnership with the Cass County Fair. I share communications with 4H families regarding rules, dates, and deadlines. This information is shared in association meetings through email, social media, club leaders, and our newsletter. I provide YQCA training certification classes for youth exhibiting smite in Cass County Fair, which includes completing a yearly training certification to be an instructor. Along with the superintendent, I coordinate youth to exhibit judging day. Everything from building cleanup and setup to securing judges, finding volunteers to act as clerks and runners, setting up displays, and more. This year, we had close to 40 volunteers helping us that day. I also staff the youth office during the fair week and coordinate delivering or pickup of items superintendent seat for show day and more. This year, I'm also looking forward to a new partnership with the Cass County Tractor Pullers. Together, we're going to offer a tractor operator farm safety course this spring to the youth of Cass County and surrounding areas. Youth that successfully complete this program will obtain a federal license to operate equipment and work in ag-related fields. I am also looking to expand my partnership with the Cass District Library. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for allowing us to be here and talk with you today. My name's Kathy Fisher. I'm a 4H educator, as well with Janice Serb. We support Cass County, as well as other counties, in the programming that we do and the functions that we serve. My function is to support Hillary, specifically in the 4H programs that she's doing here, helping her with her club development, recruiting volunteers, and such in everything that she does. I can come in and provide specialty programs for our partners and for our volunteers. I help her come up with activities to do with the clubs, things like that. Part of what Janice does is supporting other partnerships through schools. One of the things that she does that's really exciting is the entrepreneurship camp that's noted in your flyer on page, I think five maybe. That camp is really unique in that it draws kids from various areas, many of them from Cass County participated this year. But that camp actually teaches kids how to take a passion of theirs, create a business around it, and be successful at it. So we're teaching kids at a young age how to grow their own business, and during this camp, they not only create their business and execute it, but then they get a chance to sell their product. And they choose to donate the proceeds of that to an organization, a nonprofit organization that they choose to. So that's a really great skill that we're able to help provide youth with in growing those skills, and who knows what those kids may do someday. So appreciate your time today and allowing us to be here and talk, and I'm sure at the end, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I think it's really powerful to hear it from their own lips, because they're on the ground doing the work. And this was just a snapshot of the work that has been done. It's important that you see and hear it, because you fund Hillary's salary. So just really grateful that she had this opportunity to share a bit about the work that she does. Now, I'll share a bit about some of the other institutes that we offer programming here in Cass County for. Even though we only have, the MOA covers Hillary's position and our office manager, who is at 50%, we also have educators and instructors from across the southwest Michigan region, providing programming here in Cass County. So I'll share a bit about those. Starting off with our Health and Nutrition Institute. In 2025, so far, we have delivered 39 nutrition programs to over 500 residents right here in Cass County. We partnered with 18 local organizations. I mentioned some of those before, schools, food banks, you name it. And a really wonderful partnership that we had was with the Pokagon Band. And you'll notice that it is highlighted in the second to last page, I believe it is. There's a picture here of, you know, individuals just learning cooking skills, and this was a very well-received program. It was the Cooking Matters class with the Pokagon Band of Potawatomi Tribe. I also want to highlight that Nora Lee, our community nutrition instructor, has had an enduring legacy here in Cass County. She has partnered with numerous schools, and there's a highlight here of one fourth-grade student who was so pleased with the fact that vitamin C can actually have an impact on his health outcome. So he had a cold, and based on information he had learned from Nora in class, he discovered that, hey, if I eat more oranges, it'll help my health outcome. And he was so happy to exclaim that when he came back and met with Nora. So you'll notice on the bottom of the page, there's a whole range of online programs that we offer. Prior to this role as the district director, I taught some of these classes, and so they're very helpful and beneficial to us all. And if you're interested, please feel free to take a look at those links. And I'll quickly move on to the last couple institutes. Our Community Food and Environment. Many of you are very familiar with Tyler Oxt. He has done some very powerful programming right here in Cass County, right here, probably in this building. He has taught governing essentials, and he had a board of commissioner workshop, which I hear was very well-received. So he is doing a lot of great work throughout the region. We're excited about a new development. The Villania Township website now features our zoning resources on their webpage. I think there are about seven links to our website. So it's just good to see that our programs are becoming more and more accessible to our community. Finally, I just want to touch base on the agriculture and agribusiness work that we do here in Cass County. Our agriculture team continues to support local farms. We've delivered 12 program sessions to 78 Cass County residents, and that is highlighted on the last page of the document. Beth Ferry, who is actually based out of Marion County, came here and conducted seven pork quality assurance site assessments. And these are helpful, because they help farms meet those high standards of animal care, and as a result, it improves, you know, quality of care for the animals and also for us, who are going to consume them down the line. So individuals who pass that certification can then continue with their work. We also offered crop and pest management update meetings and classes. There were about over 20 people who participated, 19 of whom are from Cass County, and they received weed control guides for field crops, which are very pertinent to the southwest Michigan region. In April, Paola led a Spanish-led dairy training for farm workers in a local farm, Sparks Catali Farm. And this covered everything from milking routines to mastitis prevention. So all really important work that can help improve productivity and efficiency in the farms. Finally, I just want to highlight Jonathan Laporte. Back in May, when we had our presentation, we highlighted the demand series that he coordinates. In addition to that, he also coordinates the foreign business management and risk management programs, and he's doing great work just helping our farmers, whether they're new farmers or veteran farmers, to be able to be most efficient. So as I close out, I just want to thank you so much for your continued partnership. I think it's important to keep these lines of communication open, so that you see where your dollars are going, and give you an opportunity to ask any questions, if you have that. We have a wide variety of educators and instructors, and we're very grateful for the work that they do, and we thank you for allowing them to do so. So at this point, I'll stop and ask if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am. So you just said about where our dollars go. That's what our main, our main job as commissioners is the budget and spending the money wisely of all the residents here. And we're accountable to our constituents, to like 55-plus thousand people. So if they were to come and ask us what we give our money to Michigan State Extension for, is there a way that we can get a breakdown, you know, like maybe an itemized report on where that money goes?
Well, in a nutshell, it goes towards salary, you know, paying our salary for our staff. The 4H program coordinator, everything Hillary shared is because she is funded by the Cass County MOA.
Right.
And then the 50% effort for our county support staff is also from the county. So it allows us to be present in the community, doing the great work that Hillary spoke about, but also being present in our office, so that if somebody is looking to buy a soil test, for instance, Terry, our secretary, is right there on the ground, and she can respond and assist them. I know during fair, I was actually there as well, and it was a really wonderful, successful fair. We were very involved in that as well. Terry and Hillary were there on numerous days, on multiple hours per day. So the work is really being done, and hopefully this document, I made extra copies. If they really want to get a good glimpse of what we're doing, please feel free to share this copy to them. Or they can reach out to us. We have our contact information as well there. We're always happy to engage and just share how the work is being done.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Was 4H enrollment up or down this year? Do you know?
I will defer to the 4H experts. Come on over. Okay, she says it was very similar to last year. At this point, we have 656 youth enrolled in 4H. And last year, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the 2024 annual report on hand, but you can actually tell me. It's listed there on the 2024 county annual report.
This says it was 656 enrolled in 4H under the 2024 annual report?
Oh, perfect. So it's pretty equivalent.
656 for the 2025 updates?
Yep. It's the same number.
Okay. And I have another question.
Sure.
So there seems to be, I don't want to say a problem, disagreements between the Cass County Fire Board and MSU Extension. Are you know, is MSU working towards making those situations better?
Absolutely. It is our goal and our commitment to work collaboratively. We've had multiple meetings, and we have discussed how best we can collaborate with our partners, with the fair board. We've had a meeting with the president just a few weeks ago, and we worked quite well during the last fair. So I am happy to invite Hillary to come on up to share some of that, if you'd like to hear more. Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you all so much. We appreciate you.
Not when Michigan plays, either. Alright. Item K, Vice Chair Lawrence.
Chair Jones, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda from M-120-2025 to M-126-2025 with a one-time roll call vote.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
And Commissioner Langley.
Alright. District One, commissioner reports.
Nothing at this time, sir.
District Two.
Nothing at this time.
District Three.
Nothing, no.
District Five. District Six.
Nothing to report.
Don't disappoint me, District Seven.
Okay, from my district, the Fall Festival is all set to go on September 20th, and it's at the Edwardsburg Fire Department. We have 80 vendors, five food trucks, a bounce house, just to name a few, and a petting zoo. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00. There is no charge, but we hope you'll buy some food and some stuff from the vendors. Now, the Board of Health met August 13th, and of course, the big topic of conversation is their budget took a $650,000 hit, and it is likely that dental will take the biggest hit of that. Daniel Persky asked for two commissioners, one from each county, to serve on a budget review committee to look at the health department's budget, especially the dental program. The dental office, environmental health, and the health promotions have all seen an increase in their work. Dr. Wile reported that tobacco and alcohol use are down. According to statistics, it is recommended for college students to have a Narcan kit in their dorm rooms. And then Dr. Wile went on to describe the symptoms of drug overdose. He was asked to do that. The opioid advisory committee met on August 25th, and as a reminder, the opioid summit on September 25th is at the college, and so far, 150 people have signed up to attend. A part of the summit has been an early morning breakfast, but it was decided to postpone that and to have that some later date as a special event. It's believed that the summit will spur applications for our project funding. It was decided to add information about the Narcan boxes to let the community know that it is not a taxpayer-funded. Materials Management Planning Committee met August 18th, and we have discussed the plan to have working groups to help. Each county will have one five-member group that will look at needs of that particular county, and there will be a policy working group and an education working group. We have presentations from Eagle on food waste, which is really becoming a hot topic. Nance met on August 26th. It was a really short meeting. Again, we were presented with the information on Mnet projects for 2026, which include a great amount of work on US-12, from west of Edwardsburg all the way to Union. And I will have, I have that information. I have given it before, but I have more, the same thing, if you need more. I was not able to attend the cow last month, but I watched it on YouTube, and y'all did a nice job. That's it.
Good luck, District Eight.
She did a great job.
Alright. I'm glad I don't have to follow that. County Partners, we have the SCSC here. You have any reports for us? Alright. And I'm looking through, there's...
Who else is here?
Oh, I skipped it. My bad. I skipped Administrator's report. Thank you. Jen?
My report is in the packet. The only thing I just wanted to point out was that the Household Hazardous Waste Day is coming up at the Road Commission, September 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00. And always great to see commissioners out there helping. Always a successful event, and nice to see the community out there getting our beautiful county cleaned up.
Bad place for me to be, because I'm a pack rat. Been there three days, three times in a row, and I bring more home than I left with. Back to County Partners. We already covered that. Unless I missed somebody out there, I don't think so. Think we're good. Elected officials. Clerk.
Thank you. Just real quick, wanted to share that we have a new email subscription service that will provide all sorts of information on elections. Please sign up. Please share with your townships. Share with your constituents. We want to get the word out and try to get our turnout increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer, you have anything for us? Prosecutor.
Not a lot, but I think most of you got the press release on the walnut tree, and while that brings a little bit of a smile to the face, it was really a very good resolution of that case. It was a good investigation. The drug team, C-DAT team, was part of that investigation. Some citizens came forward to really stop what is really, really a real problem throughout Michigan, as well as the country, where, again, these were drug addicts taking trees that, again, allow them to cash in some money. This tree was likely over 50 years old. Us being an agricultural county primarily, this was certainly an important thing. And again, I just appreciate the efforts by some citizens, as well as law enforcement, to help this thing get resolved and catch the bad guys. Thank you.
Sheriff.
So happy to report that our two cadets at Lake Michigan College graduated last week and both successfully passed their licensing test. So one of them starts on the road tomorrow night and the other one next week. So I'll have them here with me in a couple weeks to introduce you to them. But two new faces in the squad car, so we're excited about that. Our other four are in the last phase of their field training, so they'll be getting put out on the road here by themselves here pretty soon, but close eye kept on them for a while, so. And we have two more at Kellogg right now that'll graduate in December, so we're excited about that. We had a rabies clinic over the weekend, and I'll let Ronnie tell you about that.
Good afternoon. Well, rounding out the end of dog days of summer, we tried for a first time a midsummer rabies vaccination clinic at the shelter, and I'm happy to report that it was greatly successful. Dr. Terry and staff from Bergman Small Animal Clinic saw 54 dogs and 11 cats. Some of those cats were from a feral outdoor colony, which is a first. some of those cats were from a feral outdoor colony, which is a first, and all those animals received ninety-five vaccinations, and it was a good day.
Thank you, sir. Judge Beeler is not here, Drain Commissioner, Drain Commissioner is not here. All right, number one under unfinished business is M-127-25, that's the motion to implement the class and classification and compensation study, but I would like to table this, and before I go any further, the elected officials have sent us a, gave us a memo, so the elected officials department is not in question at all, not even looked at, but I would like to send it to the Salary Committee and have the department heads represented by the department heads, because I don't think they've been fairly looked at since, what's her first name's, Ms. Folks? Yeah, way back then, and I went around and talked to people, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's right, some things are missing, and without getting into too much detail, I'd like to send it to the Salary Committee that, that consists of me, Commissioner Langley, Commissioner Grace, and Commissioner Lee, along with Jen and Beth, to talk about the department heads and how they were classified, and then make a decision, and then pass the class, classification and compensation study as a whole after that point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I came to tonight's meeting prepared to ask a number of questions regarding the classification and compensation study, so it, can it be my understanding that we will be taking up, we will be postponing tonight's, and we will be taking it up at another time, so I can get my questions answered?
Well, I, I don't know, you probably could answer those questions now, get those answered now, but unless you come to the Salary Committee meeting...
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, because that one will be where we're talking about only the department heads, not the, if your questions are about the department heads, that would be the time.
It's, it's not, they're not, my questions are not about, strictly about department heads, no.
Okay, because that's the only thing that I plan on talking about in that Salary Committee meeting, is department heads only, and then we can do that, and then if, if this needs to be passed quickly, we can schedule a special meeting, but if we can wait till, like, right before the cow, have the special meeting then, you know, as long as we can get a meeting with the Salary Committee in the next week, week and a half, and then half an hour before our next cow meeting, call a special meeting, and then we can pass this as the Salary Committee recommends for the department heads. Anybody got any objection to that?
Okay, so just so we can do this correctly, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move, motion, M-127-2025, motion to implement the classification, classification and compensation study.
You move, are, what are you moving to take, are you moving to post?
So you have to refer it to the committee, I'm doing it the appropriate way, you make the motion, and then you refer it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my intent, does anybody wish to second?
I'll second then.
Yeah. You're gonna have to guide me on this, because that's what, so a motion on the floor and support, then the discussion, is there a discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to refer this motion to the Salary Committee for further, further discussion and to be represented to the board.
Okay.
Support.
All right, motion on the floor and support for that referral, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion passes, now we need to vote on the first one, or is it done at that point? All right, I'm glad you're here, Mr. Parliamentarian, so, and so at that point, for the department heads that are present, we're gonna find out, Jen, if you could have Ambrosia or Casey send out a request for some days for us to have that meeting, and at that point, department heads, we invite you all to come individually, and then we'll call on you, and then we'll get with each individual department head, and then we'll move it forward to the, to the cow, or to the meeting before the cow, all right? Okay, number two is Sam, 128-2025.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add motion, 128-2025, to appoint Vicki Hall to the Woodlands Board.
That is your motion?
Second.
Yeah, motion on the floor and support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three, Al, you have R-17-2025.
It's just a motion to leave Cass County Conservation District at eighty-six thousand dollars.
I'll support.
Really quick, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could we have him repeat that, because I didn't hear?
We missed the discussion about the investigation findings.
Oh?
That's done.
Yeah, because I gotta go in order, yeah, I've got it written, I've got scribble scratch all over my paper here, so hold on, Al, for that one, all right? We'll go to the first motion, nope, the second motion is the County Admin. So, with the County Administrator, we have to be careful here for what we say. So, I sent out to all the commissioners, or the commissioners received a, the investigation report, that one, disregard that one, there's another one, because we found some typos, because like Roseanne says, whatever we do, we want it to be our best work possible, so I will send that out to you all as a blind copy after this meeting. Then, so based on a report that was received from the County Attorney, who completed the investigation on the allegations brought against the County Administrator, Mr. Jordan, based on the findings, what actions do we want to do tonight?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to immediately terminate the employment of Patrick Jordan without severance paid pursuant to Section 3A, 3, and 5 of his, his employment agreement, the Commission of Act, which offends common decency or morality or brings discredit upon the county or the Board in misconduct, gross negligent conduct. I move that we deal with this right now and right here, and put it behind us.
Support.
Motion on the floor and support, and some music in the background, discussion? Standby. I think that says everything that we need to say. Is there anything anybody want to add? Now, ask for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes. Motion passes. Now, let me get back to my scribble scratch. Now, we're back to Commissioner Northrup, R-17-2025.
I, I just want to make the motion to leave the Soil District at eighty-six thousand dollars, I feel that's been pretty adamant, and I believe that, that we should just leave it there.
I'll support.
Motion on the floor and support, we're gonna need some explanation, I guess, or no, are we good? Any discussion?
So, question, the, the motion is to, is this for the, the resolution for 2026 General Appropriations Act?
Yes.
Might I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I would move to pass the resolution and then amend it?
Are you making that motion?
I'm, I'm just making a suggestion.
And then that would still satisfy Commissioner Northrup's request or motion?
Yes, yes.
Yes, echo.
Okay.
All right, so that would be good if you would do that for us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move, R-17-2025, Resolution for FY 2026 General Appropriations Act.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support, then now he will...
Yes, now.
Now you can move to amend that motion, Commissioner Northrup.
I would move to amend it.
Right, for what he said prior to that, Monica already has written down. All right, motion on the floor and support for the amendment, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, now for the total...
Yeah, the discussion for the motion is amended.
Yep, for R-17-2025, all in favor, say aye?
It's a, it's a...
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call, it's a resolution, you're right, roll call, please, thank you.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep.
And Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes. I think we've completed everything under the unfinished business, correct? Yes, yeah, all right, new business, R-18-2025, Resolution to Authorize Participation in the Secondary Manufacturers Settlement and Affirming Compliance with the State Subdivision Agreement.
I'll second then.
Oh, well, I guess that is my motion then. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Resolution passes, I will do the next two then. Number two, I move for R-19-2025, Resolution to Authorize Participation in the Purdue and Sackler Settlement and Affirming Compliance with the State Subdivision Agreement.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support, any discussion? Another roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
That resolution passes, the last one, R-20-2025, I move to approve the Resolution to Authorize Participation in a Generic Manufacturers Settlement and Affirming Compliance with the State Subdivision Agreement.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
These three resolutions, as a member of the opioid advisory committee, which is what this has, what this pertains to, it appears that we're getting money periodically, and this is what this is, which is going to add to our funding, that's why we... That's why we need people to initiate projects for that, and I want to thank you all for approving these resolutions.
It's a very good thing, yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
And Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Final resolution passes. All right, the last public comment, before I open the floor for the public comment, this is for anything that is not on the agenda, I'll reiterate that this is not a platform, please keep your comments relevant to Cass County, the floor is now open. Push the little button in the middle, ma'am, got it.
I don't need it, but...
Well, this is for the people on YouTube.
My name is Zelda Cloud, and I am a current board member for Cass County Fair, and this is Jeanne Spillman, she is, works in the office with us, and I would like to expand on some of the information that MSU provided you earlier, and we'll start out with that we had approximately seven hundred and forty-four plus or minus youth that exhibited at the fair this year. We feel this number is significantly up because of the constant continual communication that was provided by our office, including Jeanne, to the youth superintendents and key leaders. Our numbers, our youth livestock, we had for dairy was twenty-one, dairy feeder had sixty-two, beef had sixty-five, sheep had fifty-eight, goats were at one forty-three, swine was at one fifty-five, poultry was at one eighty-three, rabbits one eighty-six, light horse one seventy-six, draft horse at thirty-nine, cats were twelve, and dogs were twenty-four. The youth still exhibit portion, needlework, we had forty-six exhibitors, culinary arts, a hundred and seventeen, fine arts, one oh five, folk arts, one ninety-seven, photography was ninety-three, agriculture was one, floriculture was sixty-three, horticulture, thirty-three participants, sciences, we had fifty, natural resources, we had thirteen, education projects, we had a hundred and thirty-four, and demonstrations were at twelve. The seven hundred and forty-four number reflects not only the 4H youth that participate, but also the open youth who participate at our fair. Cass County Fair is not a 4H fair, it is a county fair, which means that it is open to all youth that are in Cass County or adjoining counties. Any youth that is in a county over besides one that is right next to it can still participate as long as they are part of a Cass County group.
Do you have anything else to add?
I don't think, I, I question, because this is my...
You can step over here a little bit, please.
I'm sorry, this is my first year being solid into this, and my question was, how frequently, if at all, we go over numbers like I gathered for you today, to determine which programs should be continued or discontinued? The agricultural program, we did have one child sign up for it, but did not actually participate in it, so it means everything in that department, every class, had zero participation, so I wouldn't want us to waste resources on something that isn't being utilized by the kids, so I was curious if you knew how frequently...
No, ma'am.
No?
I don't.
Okay, all right, perhaps that's a question for someone else, but I just want to make sure that we're using our resources the best way that we can, and helping as many kids as we can.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate you guys, because my grandchildren are gonna be there hopefully soon.
Yay, bravo, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Close the floor for public comment, no closed session. District One, any announcements?
No, sir.
Two?
No, sir.
Three?
No, sir.
None for four, five?
No, sir.
Six?
Yes, just real quick, in light of this board's recent decision to terminate employment with Patrick Jordan, I'd like us to consider our interim administrator, Jennifer Rentfro, and how we're taking care of her. Last time she stepped up to this role, we entered into a contract with a compensation package adjustment to help her out with all the added duties that she's taking on, I'd like for us to consider something like that in retro, excuse me, and do the retro pay from when she took over that position.
Yeah, we're gonna start that probably tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Was that six, seven?
Okay, I have a couple things. First of all, thank you for passing, for starting the sixty-three day comment period for the County Master Plan, and I just want you all to know that copy is, I have to have Ambrosia's on the website, and so, and we, we all should have copies, and so, if anyone out there, if you, when you look at it, if you see something that you think needs to be changed or added to, or if you look at it and you think something is missing, that's what the sixty-three day comment period is for, so please get it to us, get it to Ambrosia so we can deal with it at the County Planning Commission, because we're hoping that we will be able to pass it, approve it in, at the December meeting, so there is that. Now, the second thing that I have is that there's two people, and I'm sure I'm doing this incorrectly, but move, do ahead, go ahead and do it anyway, there's two staff members who deserve recognition for their hard work and effort. Number one is Jennifer, for all her hard work on the budget, she had to go over that budget innumerable times, and so, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate everything, I, it's so, I'm just so glad I don't have to do the budget, so, at any rate, next thing. I want to thank Ambrosia, because she was such an important part of our master plan. We could not have gotten it done without her. And she even talked to our, our planner today, and she did, she's done a super job. She and Tyler got in there and they made corrections to the master plan like you guys would not believe. And so, thank you. Thank you to both of these employees. We're so lucky to have them.
Yes, we are.
That's it.
All right. Commissioner Lee.
We're good.
Yeah, man, we might have to change that order or something.
Hey, I can always just say, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Without further ado, we adjourn.